...here with us today. I think this is her first campaign event and might have been started now, right? So Liz has also a very, very impressive resume. She's the co-leader of the Spencer-Stewart Sports Business Cracker. She's a leader in the sports industry with a decade of executive search, leadership, and consulting work. She regularly partners with companies in sectors with unrepresented women, which I really appreciate, particularly in the area of sports, media, and technology. And she's working to recruit new and diverse leaders. She has her bachelor's degree from Georgetown University, and she played varsity field hockey there. She has her master's from Harvard in leadership. And she sits on the board of the Essex Community Foundation, as well as Peace Players International. And she is married to Seth Moulton and has a beautiful little daughter, Emmy. And welcome. Nice to have you here with us today. Liz, thank you so much. Thank you. Hello.
Thank you all for coming. We decided to come with Seth today because, as you like to know, he's been on the road quite a bit. I'm thankful all of you came today as well and are taking a chance to get to know Seth a little bit better. Many of you have met Seth. This is his 55th town hall. But for those of you who haven't, I wanted to introduce him and share a little bit about your congressman from his most vocal constituents. First, you should know that I'm a strong woman who married a man, but not only values the extolled strong woman. He is the most supportive partner I could have, and he elevates me in my career every day. And that's a very big deal. Second, I'm a supporter and, yes, a constituent of Seth. I urge him to make changes, everything from the traffic in Salem where we live, which is a mess, to the ways we can evolve local businesses. As I walk around Newburyport, you see all the amazing local businesses here. I push him just as you should push him, because Seth loves to be pushed. He wants you to be demanding, and he wants you to expect great things. That's who Seth is. I was drawn to Seth because he is honest and ethical as the day is long. He cannot, under any circumstance, tell a lie, even when it would be to his benefit. I remember this from the first time I cooked him dinner, and he could not even fib and tell me that he liked the way I cooked salmon, which is very well done and dry. At our house, you do not lie. I was also drawn to Seth because he is holy about serving others. Seth chose to enter the United States Marine Corps after college to serve us as a country. Seth chose to serve in Congress and to change a system that needs changing. I have been with Seth more times than I can count when he drops everything, literally everything, to help a former platoon member or a person on his staff, a cousin, a community member. He helps them turn their lives around. He helps them find great jobs. He helps them get on the straight and narrow after harrowing addiction. Seth helps. He loves and he supports unconditionally. So here's Seth.
Can you all hear me all right? These microphones are not coordinated, so we have to move. So first of all, Liz, thank you. Thank you for coming here. Liz was actually speaking over in Gloucester, and it went late. And so she said, "Why don't I just go over and meet you in Newburyport?" And I said, "Fine." And then she texted again, and she said, "Why don't I introduce you?" And I said, "Sure." I mean, you might have some competition with Donna, but we can work it out. So thank you, Liz. Mayor Holliday, who disappeared. There you are. Thank you so much. Your leadership here in Newburyport has made a difference in the lives of countless people. And it's not always been easy. You know, the sign of a leader is not someone who just takes the convenient position that goes where everyone is always already going. That's not leadership. That's just going with the flow. And you've been willing to take some tough positions in this community that have made a difference, and I really respect that. So thank you. Keep it up, and we're proud partners in all the work that we do together. To the other elected officials and other folks, I see Charlie over there, some people who have been involved in Democratic politics and all of that, or Republican politics for that matter, thank you. Thank you for taking a stake in our democracy. I am here as your representative in Congress. This is actually, this is not a campaign event. This is an official event. So I really am not here to answer questions about campaigns. I am here to talk about the work that we do every single day to represent you in Washington and to take care of you here in the district. And so I thought I would just go through some of the things that we've started with over the, just over the past week. First of all, a few pieces of legislation. We just announced that the Heads Up Act. The Heads Up Act is, has been proposed before Congress. The Heads Up Act designates intellectually disabled people as an underserved medical population. Now, this is a little bit of technical, medical mumbo jumbo, but it's actually very, very important. If you know anyone who has an intellectual disability, if you're the family member of someone, this will help them get the resources that they need, that they deserve, and that, frankly, they should have been getting for the last 30 years. We were shocked, as a team, when we learned that this group of people was not, did not already receive this designation. Frankly, it's just a pure cost-saving measure that they were kept out of it, but it's unfair. It's not right, and we're there to fix it, and this is a bipartisan bill. The second bill that we've been talking a lot just recently is the Save Right Whales Act. You know, we have a choice. We can be either the generation that watches the right whale go extinct right off our coast, or we can be the generation that saves it. And so we've worked closely, not only with groups like the New England Aquarium, but also with the fishermen, the lobstermen, with all the stakeholders to bring them together and find a way to save this iconic species. This is another bill that's bipartisan. It's hard to do anything environmental these days that's bipartisan, but this is a bipartisan bill. And just this week, it was passed out of committee with bipartisan support to go to the floor of the House. So we're making progress on that as well. A third thing that we did just this past week is propose some legislation, another bipartisan bill, to attack the producers of Chinese fentanyl. The opioid crisis hits every community in America, and it's gotten a lot worse just in the past year because of fentanyl, which is, as many of you know, an extraordinarily powerful opiate. It's actually kind of used to treat horse problems. And the Chinese producers have been very effective at getting it into the American market. This is a bipartisan bill that will go after them. And it's important because it will affect the lives of a lot of people who are addicted to opioids across this country, including a lot of folks right here in this community. I also did a podcast with the Special Forces, a Special Forces organization that is talking about patriotism and service and all of that. I spoke at a Future of Defense Forum in Washington, D.C., talking about how we need to transform our defense to get ready for the newest challenges, the latest challenges from Russia and China, and also do so in a way that saves money. That means making some hard choices about cutting the legacy, old-fashioned weapon systems that we don't need in favor of the next-generation systems that we do. It means thinking about a new generation of arms control. It means thinking about a new generation of alliances. We have a president who's been tearing apart NATO and other alliances around the globe. We need to make sure that they are not just repaired, but prepared for a new world, a world where Russia is not attacking us in Eastern Europe through the full of the gap with a whole bunch of tanks. They're attacking us and our allies every day through the internet. And NATO doesn't have, doesn't know how to deal with that because it's founded on a 1949 framework. And finally, the last thing I'll mention, which is a bit of a preview because it's coming out this week, is that we are, we have a new bill to address the combined sewage overflow issue that you have all experienced here in the Merrimack Valley. We have been working very closely with Lori Trahan, the new representative just to my west, and she proposed some funding to address this, which we hope can get through the appropriations process. We have a bill that will just make sure everybody knows when there's a discharge. That's not the case right now. It's kind of crazy that it's not, but that's not the case. And this bill will put in place a system so that every community downriver from a potential discharge is notified if one occurs. So this is just some of the work that we've been doing here in the district office, and we will continue doing at the, here in the district office and in Washington, to serve all of you, even while I am busy doing a bit of traveling around the country, much of it just to our north here in New Hampshire. But I made the decision to get in this race because I believe it's the best way I can serve the country. It's always the guideline I've used. It's why I kept going back to Iraq even though I disagreed with the war, because I thought it was the best way I could serve the country, and I didn't want anyone going in my place. It's why, after coming back from Iraq, I ran for Congress, to try to make some changes in Washington and prevent some of the mistakes I saw happening on the ground in Iraq from happening again. And I honestly believe the best way that I can serve the country, and frankly, serve you, is to help get some other changes in Washington, more specifically on Pennsylvania Avenue. And that's why I'm running. So I'm not here to talk about that race in particular, although I will take questions about whatever you would like. But I do want you to know my thinking behind it and all the ways that my team and I continue to serve you every single day. That's my mother. She's also a constituent, so she's allowed to be here too. Taking care of Emmy is a, is a big family ordeal with two working parents, two working parents who travel a lot for our work. So thanks for coming, Mom. All right, so that is it. I will turn it over to you. And for the folks who know me well, thank you. Welcome back. For the folks who are here for the first time, it's a pleasure to meet you. It's an honor to serve you, and I'm glad that you're here participating in our democracy this afternoon. Thanks. All right.
I'm wondering what you could have done to stop the sewage overflow rather than just the worst.
So that's actually the partnership that Congresswoman Trahan and I have, in that we're trying to do both. And we kind of divided up the work here. The most immediate thing we need to do is let people know when they're happening, and that's what my bill does. Her bill addresses some of the infrastructure needs that will take some time to be put in place, but will hopefully help stop this in the long run. But the bottom line is that this is another example of our failed infrastructure. And when we talk about infrastructure, we all know the potholes. Emmy knows them well from driving up here from Salem. We all know the bridges that are starting to fall down. But we don't talk enough about the underlying infrastructure, like the sewage systems, the water systems. You know, I talked to a, can you guys, is this, I talked to an 18-year-old woman in, just north of here, in Salem, New Hampshire, yesterday, who is voting for the first time. And I asked her what issues are important to her. And she said the one thing that really gets under her skin is the Flint water crisis. And she just can't understand why we can't simply fix Flint's water so that when you turn on the faucet, you don't have to worry about poisoning your kids. I mean, that should not happen in the United States of America, and yet it happens in a major city like Flint. You shouldn't have to worry about going swimming in the Merrimack River and swimming in sewage, but we have to worry about that here today. So there is so much we need to do to fix our infrastructure. And we are working on an infrastructure bill. Our congressional leadership met with the president. I want to make sure that we don't only put a lot of money into it, which we all know we need, but that we actually invest in the right things. That means not adding lanes to highways. That's a very 1950s approach to infrastructure. It means building 21st century infrastructure, making sure that it's resilient, so that as climate change happens and we have more flash floods and it overflows sewage systems, we can deal with that. So as rivers rise and the ocean rises, we have the infrastructure to protect us and our communities. It means making sure that everybody in America has broadband access, because I'm sure you have it right here in Newburyport, but there are a lot of people, even in Massachusetts, who don't have broadband access and can't compete for the same jobs. And it also means investing in modern transportation systems. You know I'm a big proponent of regional rail, to get you from point to point faster in Massachusetts. Not, "I have to get on the train because the roads are too clogged and it's going to take forever, but this is the best way I can get to Boston," but rather, "I'd rather get on the train because it's nicer than driving and faster, and oh, by the way, it's also great for the environment." So thank you for letting me expound on infrastructure with that question, but it's a great question, and it goes to the heart of something that we need to work on much more in Washington. Thanks. All right, I always get in trouble if I have to pick people, so people come up to I, "Why didn't you pick me?" So I unceremoniously delegate this to my staff, so you can yell at them if you don't get, if you don't get picked. So ISIS, oh, microphone problem.
Thank you very much for your efforts on the opioid crisis. I lost my grandson to opioids this past September, so I'm rather sensitive to the issue. His death was the second death in that house, and I don't think the first one related to opioids, but several weeks or months later, there was a third death in that sober house. And it's my understanding that there is no oversight and no regulatory process for governing the operation of sober houses. So I'm wondering if there's any consideration or effort looking into how we might improve the effectiveness of sober houses.
Sir, I'm so sorry, and I can't imagine how difficult it is to share that story, to think about it, especially now knowing, you know, what it's like to have, or seeing what my, how my mother and father feel as grandparents. So to be perfectly honest, as Liz says, I don't lie. I don't know. I don't know the answer to your question, but we will find out. There are a lot of different bills that have been proposed to address the opioid crisis, and I could talk about a lot of them, but I'm not sure about these regulations. One of the problems with many of the bills is that they've been proposed, but they haven't been funded. Many of them are even bipartisan, but they haven't been funded. So it could be the case that a bill has been proposed to address this, but it hasn't been funded. It could also be the case that, frankly, not enough of us have heard this or heard these stories, but that's why we do town halls, so that we can learn things from you and respond to your needs. And I hope you will share your contact information with my team so that we can follow up with you directly on this, but I promise we will look into it, learn about it, and if there's legislation that we can propose ourselves to address it, we'll get that done. Thank you.
Another question about the opioid crisis. I just wonder how hopeful you are that something can be done. On Tuesday night, 5:00, a very vibrant, active, strong, 82-year-old Newburyport woman was hit by a car that was, the kid hit over the door. It wasn't a kid, it was 30 years old. New Hampshire police said he had the longest rap sheet they've seen, that he had ever seen.
You, you laugh.
Thank you, thank you. So they, she's in the hospital. She will probably survive, but her life will never be the same, even with hundreds of people whose rap sheet impacts. And I just turned over this, then, he's got this long, long rap sheet. He keeps on being let out. I mean, it's, and he went to one of those sober houses and nothing really constructed happened, but it's not just the people who were taking the drugs that are affected, it's every one of us, the wrong age, everything. So I just wonder if you're hopeful that something can be done.
Thank you, and again, I'm terribly sorry. Yes, I'm hopeful, but it's going to take a lot of work. One of the things I talk about a lot is having the courage to be honest about the challenges that we face. And one of the realities with addressing the opioid crisis is that it is so hard because these tricks are, drugs are so addictive, and they have spread so far and wide across the country, that it is not going to be easy, and it is frankly going to cost a lot of money, to set up the treatment programs, the interdiction programs, the find the people, fund the programs, and everything else that we need to help people get off these drugs. Is this still working, or is it fading out? Can you hear me? Country that doesn't think we've all figured everything out. At our heart, we're a country that believes that we might. Think about it. In the 1950s, there were a lot of Americans who got addicted to drugs and couldn't find a treatment program to solve their addiction. Well, it's 2019, folks, and there are a lot of people who get addicted to drugs and can't find a treatment program to fight their addiction. And I could tell you this about a lot of other things. There are a lot of people in the 1950s who couldn't get mental health care. Well, there was a veteran who committed suicide in a VA waiting room this past week because he couldn't see a therapist. So there are a lot of things, there are a lot of challenges that we have in this country that we haven't surmounted yet, that we haven't fixed. But at our best, we're a country that puts people to work every day and has people stand up every day to serve our country to make it better. And right here in this neck of the woods, I mean, the whole, the whole Angel Program was started in Gloucester. That model has been duplicated across the country for people to be able to walk into a police station and rather be put in handcuffs, be put in a treatment facility to get off But we also have to be honest about how challenging this is. There are a lot of people who go into treatment programs and then relapse because the drugs are so addictive. I have a lot of friends who are veterans who are breaking the law to use cannabis, not in Massachusetts where it's legal, but in other states where it's not, because they don't want to get addicted to opioids. But they know that they're breaking federal law just so they don't get addicted to these drugs. So we've got a long way to go, and it's going to take all of us to chip in. You know, I have, I've been a congressman now for four years, five years, and I have people come into the office all the time, some of you have come in yourselves, to talk about issues like this, where we need to invest more money. You know, we need to invest more money in researching this disease. The Alzheimer's group is a great group that comes in every, every single year, and they make a really good case. In fact, we'd actually save money if we invested in Alzheimer's. There are a lot of different things that we need to invest in. I've met with literally hundreds of groups of constituents who've come in and proposed different investments that we need to make. Do you know how many groups have come in and proposed ways to raise revenue to pay for all of them? You can be the first. So I just say that because it's very easy to stand up here as a politician and talk, and just say, "Yes, we're going to invest in this. We're going to throw a bunch of money at it." But we're all in this together, folks, and we have the largest deficit in American history because of the Trump tax cut. So that's why this is hard, you know, and that's why we've all got to pitch in. And that's why I think it's so important that we get back to having a government that we fundamentally trust, so that when we pay our taxes, when we make that contribution to the country, we can actually expect it to be wisely spent. Thank you.
You've mentioned passing bills in Congress.
Yes.
How about implementing the bill? The fentanyl is coming in from China, and FedEx has been able to stop it, but it's coming in through the United States post-storms, and they have been able to stop it. And they were supposed to do it 16 months ago. What happened?
So, so did everyone hear the question? So we have fentanyl coming in, and in many, and much of it is coming in through the mail, and it hasn't been stopped. The U.S. Postal Service hasn't been effective at stopping it coming through the mail. FedEx has or has not? FedEx has been effective at stopping it. Let me say two things. Actually, there's three comments to make here. One, my bill will help because it criminalizes the production of this and the distribution of this fentanyl, and so it will help, and it will light a fire under some of these organizations that need to address this, and we're going to try to get it passed. We've proposed the bill, but it hasn't passed yet. And that gets to the second point that I'd like to make, which is that there are a lot of things that we're doing in Congress right now that sound really great, but they're not being made into law. So in the House of Representatives, we passed historic voting rights reform. We passed historic protections for violence against women. We passed historic gun reform, like we've never seen before in the country. But every single one of these bills has died in the Senate because they don't have enough Republican support. And so not a single American life has been changed because none of these things have become law. And so that's why it's so important to me that we do things in ways that actually become laws. That means working with Republicans, even when they're really hard to work with. You know, when I passed the Faster Care for Veterans Act to simply make it easier for veterans to get appointments at the VA, it sounds like a real bipartisan priority. Well, it was actually pretty tough to get through. There were concerns on the far left, among some Democrats. There were concerns on the right, that it might cost too much money. But at the end of the day, we got that bill passed, and I had a sergeant major in the Army come up to me in South Carolina a couple weeks ago and say, "Thank you for doing that because I know it's made a difference." And so that's the second point I want to make on this, which is that it's really important that we actually get things done. In an era of incredible partisanship, I'm very proud of having such a bipartisan record in Congress, and I wouldn't be an effective congressman without that. The third point I'd like to make is that there will be a lot of questions in the coming weeks, we haven't had one here yet, but about health care, because a lot of different people out there are talking about different health care systems, like Medicare for All, for example. I want you to know my position on health care. I believe every American has a right to health care, period. A right. It's not a privilege, it's a right. No matter what your economic circumstances, you should have access to quality, affordable health care. But there are different ways to get there. And personally, I don't think that everybody should be forced onto a one-size-fits-all government plan designed in 1963 if you like your private insurance. Let's make those government plans the public option, as President Obama wanted under the original proposal for Obamacare. Let's make it compete against the private options. And I say that because there's a really good analogy with exactly what you brought up, the fact that the U.S. Postal Service has to compete against FedEx and UPS. Now, the U.S. Postal Service isn't exactly everyone's first pick for an efficient organization, but imagine how much worse they'd be if they didn't have any competition in the market. So I'm reading a little bit into your question to get to that, but I think it's an important point to make, which is that competition is good, and it does help hold the Postal Service accountable. My bill will hold them accountable, but we've got to make sure it actually gets passed. That's why it's important that this isn't just a Democratic bill. My Chinese fentanyl bill is a bipartisan bill, and we also have some, some leadership in the Senate that is working on it too, so we hope to actually make it become law rather quickly. Yes, sir?
What are your, what are your ideas to increase renewable energy usage in the United States?
A great question. So you care about climate change, huh?
Yes, I do.
It's good, and you should. You're going to be around a lot longer than me and some of the other folks in this room. And so I think you kind of want a planet that is livable when you grow old. Yeah, it's an absolute priority. I was one of the first people to sign on to the Green New Deal when it was just a framework, but I'm also talking about exactly But I'm also talking about exactly what should be components of the Green New Deal so that we can not only address climate change, but improve our leadership in the world and the process. And that gets to the heart of your question, because we should be leading in renewable energy. We shouldn't be looking to China for the latest renewable energy technologies. We shouldn't be buying our solar panels from China. We should be creating those things right here at home and growing American jobs in the process. I want America to lead on this. And so that's why I'm going to talk about how we do that. One of the components of the Green New Deal, of my version of the Green New Deal, is a Green Jobs Corps. So that, how old are you?
I'm 12 years old.
You're 12 years old. So that in six years, when you turn 18, if you want to serve the country, you can join the Marines like I did, or you could join the Green Job Corps and go around this country making our cities and towns more resilient, learning how to install renewable energy systems, or just make buildings more energy efficient. That's a Green Jobs Corps, just like we had the Jobs Corps, the Civilian Conservation Corps, under the original New Deal, that put a lot of young men to work across this country fixing our national parks. As part of the Green New Deal, I want to have a Green Jobs Corps that puts people like you to work, serving our country and making us more energy resilient. So is that your mom? No, right there? So I don't know if she's going to appreciate that job opportunity for you when you're 18. You'll have to discuss it with her. But I think it'd be a great opportunity for you. And if I do get elected president, I will make a Green Jobs Corps, and I hope you're one of the first to sign up. Okay. Yes, hi, how are you?
Ted, how are you? I was hoping you could comment on your current or future plans to help working families, be it maternity, paternity leave, and also affordable childcare for, you know, infants, toddlers, who's, before they hit the public school system.
Yeah, so this is definitely an issue that I understand a lot better than I did six months ago. So thank you for, for asking the question. I wouldn't dare to say I am an expert compared to many of you in the room, but it's certainly something that, a challenge that my family faces all the time. And it's especially a challenge for families that have single parents. I mean, frankly, I have no idea how single parents do it. It's hard enough with both of us and a lot of family to help. So I have a tremendous amount of respect for single parents and what they go through. The fact that we are the only developed country in the world that doesn't have good family leave policies is pathetic, and that has to change. And we're trying to change it in Massachusetts to lead the way, but we absolutely should change that at the federal level. And I'm a staunch supporter of that, I've voted for it in the past, and I will continue to support it in the future. We also have to find ways to make childcare more affordable for, for everybody, whether you're a single parent, two-parent families, whoever it is, we need to make childcare more affordable. There are different ways to do that. But one of the reasons why this is important is because these kinds of jobs are actually jobs that are real important for the future of our economy because they're not going to get automated. Now, what do I mean by that? We're going through a massive economic revolution in this country. It's called the automated revolution. And a lot of people are being left out. They're losing their jobs, not to immigrants, like some people say, but to robots that are literally automating fields out of existence. And this is happening all across the country. It's happening less here than in other parts of the country because we have many of the high-tech jobs that are replacing these old manufacturing jobs and whatnot. But one job that's not going to get automated anytime soon is taking care of your child. I'm not going to have a robot take care of Emmy. And so fields like this are actually where we should be pushing more students, preparing them for these kinds of fields. I got asked a question yesterday, said, "What are you going to do with auto mechanic who doesn't want to become a computer programmer?" And that's a really good question, because you're right, there are a lot of auto mechanics who don't want to become computer programmers. But there are a lot of service jobs that they can do, and we've got to make sure those fields are attractive, well-paying, and a lot of opportunities are available. And that gets to addressing your question as well. It's a way to grow the economy while also meeting a real economic need for working families. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Awesome, thank you for coming. Congratulations.
And I was just wondering if you are currently working on anything that helps combat the high cost of higher education in the United States?
It's a great question, and it's a question I get a lot. What are we doing to address the, the high cost of, of college education? You've actually phrased it in a really important way, and I don't know if you realize this, but most people ask this question in terms of, "What are you doing to reduce college loans?" But actually, the heart of the issue is just the cost of college. Because basically, wherever you're going to school, they said, "Okay, we don't care what the tuition price is because we're just going to give you a whole bunch of loans as much as you need to cover it. And oh, by the way, you can figure out for the rest of your life how to pay them back." Right? That's kind of how it works. So it doesn't really matter. But so the fact that matters, the issue is the rising cost of tuition. Tuition has skyrocketed over the last 20 years, and part of the reason for this is actually the availability of loans. So I'm assuming you did a little bit of economics in high school. Did you go to high school here in Newburyport?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm sure the mayor made sure you had good economics in high school. And one of the things you learn in economics is that if you lower interest rates, you make loans more easily available, you lower the cost of loans, that makes them easier to get. So actually, a lot of people who are out there saying, "Oh, we just need to cut interest rates on student loans," that could actually make the problem worse. It would be really good for me because I still pay college loans as a member of Congress. Not so good for you, who's just looking at the cost of tuition, and probably not good for a lot of people in the future who are going to continue to see that cost go up. So what we need to do is figure out ways to get at that cost of tuition. One way to do it is to increase funding for state schools that compete with private schools and therefore bring down the cost, right? If you're thinking about going, well, I can either go, maybe you just have some really strong attachment to Amherst, Massachusetts, and you can say, "Well, I either want to go to UMass Amherst, or I want to go to Amherst College." Well, if UMass Amherst, which is an extraordinary school, has a much cheaper tuition than Amherst, it's going to actually pull down the, the tuition at Amherst College because they're going to be competing for students. That's market competition in the best way. So we have to figure out ways to get out, get at this without fundamentally disrupting the ingenuity and innovation that comes from a essentially private college system by and large, that, that actually still leads the world. So thank you very much for your question, and good luck. Mayor, just so you know, she was fully nodding her head in agreement with my, my economics views, so.
Hi.
Hey, how are you?
I'm all right, how are you doing?
Good thanks.
You were talking about infrastructure.
Yes.
Okay. I commute to Boston, take the train in out of Lawrence. It costs me $380, I think, or $380, to get in and out of Lawrence. They're raising our rates, okay? I buy a T pass on my phone to save $10, but I can't use the normal T. Once I get there, they want me to use, pay more because the little card that's on my phone, the MBTA doesn't read. So I'm paying for the system that I can't use. Plus, the rails don't run to work for working parents. I have one train option. After I get Carly and Yaki off to school, I have one train to get me in at 9:00. Otherwise, I can't commute in. We recently found out Massachusetts has, if not the, one of the worst mutes into Boston.
No, it's the worst.
Oh, it is the worst.
Yeah.
It felt like the worst when I was driving it, but that's a whole other issue. You want to have more green in terms of clean air, clean water. We're losing people in Massachusetts because you can't afford to downsize and stay here. You can't afford to buy a house if you live here and you want to raise your kids here. The, the salaries aren't going up to match the cost of living in Massachusetts, and if you want people to be able to move a little further out in the suburbs, the public transportation system just is not there. What would you propose? I mean, this is a very regional, very state issue, I understand, but what would you propose the federal government could do to try to make this all work a little bit more together in a cohesive unit so that people like my daughter, who may not want to stay in Massachusetts because she can't afford to, when she graduates, they stay here, they, they, you know, have their own families here, and they continue to live here and, and make the, the place what it is today still?
The federal government should fund the North-South Rail Link. Period. Now, let me explain why. What we need in Massachusetts is a regional rail system because it addresses every single issue that you brought up. It makes the cost of housing go down because it gives much better access to housing in places where housing is cheaper. I mean, I'll give you an example that's much closer to the city, the city of Lynn. City of Lynn is actually really coming back, and it's been a big priority in my office to help economic development in the city of Lynn. And there are new lofts downtown, there are hot new restaurants, Best Burger, you know, in Lynn, in, in the city of Boston. But there still isn't enough access to get there. Now, Lynn is the same distance from downtown Boston by train as Brooklyn is from Manhattan. Now, how many of you have been to New York recently? A few, gone to Brooklyn? Imagine if the 7 train ran twice an hour. Okay, I mean, that's, that's the situation right now with us in, in Lynn. And Lynn has much more train service than Lawrence or Newburyport. Lynn is actually really good. It's one of the, one of the most frequently served cities on the entire commuter rail system, and it's nothing like what it could be. So there are a lot of young people struggling to find places to live in Somerville or Cambridge who would, Lynn could be the next hotspot, but you just can't get there right now. And the same is true for Lawrence. Newburyport would have much faster access with this. And the point is that a regional rail system that connects the North Side commuter rail with the South Side commuter rail continues the Northeast corridor so that it goes all the way from Maine to Washington. I mean, most specifically, literally Brunswick all the way down to Virginia Beach. And electrifying the system so that it's faster, it's cleaner, it's quieter, and it's nicer, so that you have trains that look more like the trains we have in Europe rather than the trains here that look like they're from the 1950s in America. That would help a lot because it would make people actually want to get on the train system. It would make it a lot faster for me to take my daughter to go visit her, my sister, and her cousins in Westwood. Because if I tried to drive to Westwood from Salem at rush hour, it would take what? An hour and a half, two hours maybe? But that'd be a 40-minute trip with the North-South Rail Link. 40-minute trip, no matter what the time of day, the traffic, whatever else. So a lot of tweaks are being made to the MBTA system, and it's great that you can buy your app on the phone. But that's not the kind of serious infrastructure investment that we need to address all these challenges that Massachusetts faces. Now, I didn't just take a position on the North-South Rail Link because Governor Dukakis asked me to, although he did. As soon as I was elected, he called and said, "I want you to support the North-South Rail Link." No, we did some real serious work on this. We did our homework. We even brought in the Urban Land Institute, this independent body that studies development, infrastructure issues at cities across the globe. And they did a study that basically said, "Look, you don't have to invest in North-South Rail Link, you don't have to develop a regional rail system, but Boston just won't grow anymore. You can't fix this problem by adding lanes to highways, and you can't fix it by, you can't fix it by making little tweaks to the commuter rail system. It's time for transformational, generational investment." Now, there are a lot of other places in America where we need to make this kind of investment too, but it's absolutely something that we need to do right here at home in Massachusetts. And if anyone disagrees, by the way, I would love to have a dialogue about it, so don't be, don't be Shanghai. Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for your service, first of all.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I had a question on your economic policies.
Sure.
You know, right now, we're seeing really good numbers with GDP, unemployment, and wage raising. So what do you propose for your?
Here, it's a great question, and I'm really glad you asked it because there are a lot of good economic numbers that are coming out right now. Unemployment is very low, at historic lows. The stock market continues to go up and up, and so a lot of people say, "Hey, what's wrong? This is looking pretty good." And like I said earlier, we're pretty lucky that in large part, in this part of the country, people are doing fairly well. But that's not the case for all Americans, and it's not the case even for everybody in this district. The problem with our economy is that the top-line numbers are so good, they're bringing up all the averages for everyone. But there are a lot of people who are being left behind. There are a lot of people who are working two or three jobs where they used to just have a really good, solid job to be able to take care of their family, maybe even go on vacation once a year. But now they've got to pay, they've got to do two or three jobs just to make ends meet. There are a lot of teachers who work a full day in the classroom and then drive Uber at night because it's the only way that they can pay the bills. And by the way, that's not just a throwaway line. I said that yesterday, and then a gentleman raised his hand to ask a question and said, "By the way, I'm one of those teachers who drives Uber at night to pay the bills." So this is a reality for, are you too?
By the way, I'm unemployed.
Okay, so here, there you go.
And do you disagree with Larry Kudlow saying that, you know, the bottom 25% are seeing the most wage increases in the overall economy?
Even if that statistic were true in isolation, wages have not gone up for working families in the last 25 years. So even if they've gone up a little bit in the last six months, it's not going to fix the problem. There is historic income inequality, wealth inequality in America today, and it leads to political problems, it leads to cultural problems, and it's an economic problem. There are a lot of people who have given up even looking for jobs, either because they can't find one, or they're, or frankly, because they're addicted to opioids. You know, the unemployment rate would look very different if a lot of those folks weren't in the job market because they're in treatment programs, or trying to get into treatment programs. So the point is, folks, this economy is a lot worse than it looks, and we have got to look out for everyone. And at the end of the day, it's going to affect every one of us if people like you can't get jobs. So what am I going to do differently? Well, again, I'm not, this is not a campaign event per se, but I think that everybody should pay comparable taxes, like it should be a fair tax rate. I don't think that people who are rich are evil. I mean, some of them are, but so are, so are some people who are poor, right? You're not automatically evil if you're a billionaire. I mean, do people really think that Bill Gates, who's going around the world trying to, you know, solve the AIDS crisis, like he's an evil person? No, no. But I just want to make sure that folks like that pay their fair share. They get to pay taxes too. How many of you in this room paid more than a dollar in taxes in 2018? I'm not talking about your refund, I'm talking about just the taxes that you paid through your paychecks or whatever else. Gosh, I'm seeing a lot of hands, seeing a lot of hands. So you paid more in taxes than Amazon. You paid more in taxes than Delta. Does that really make sense? No. Is that fair? No, that's not fair. And we could solve a lot of our debt and deficit problems to actually have the money to invest in opioid treatment programs, to have the money to invest in infrastructure if people just paid their taxes, paid fair rates, and the people with fancy tax attorneys didn't pay less than all the rest of us. So that's at the heart of my economic plan.
Last question, sir.
Hey, how are you?
Good, thank you. Thanks very much for coming.
It's a delight to be here.
A year ago at Doc School, and I was very impressed with your speaking styles.
Thanks.
Anyway, my broader question, I was wondering about your experience as a congressman going into Washington and with the incredible divisiveness of the country that, I, I look back towards the Clinton years, New Cambridge, and all that, when things really began to collapse as far as any sort of camaraderie or any kind of interaction and willingness to compromise. It seems so difficult. I, I know we'll get out of this eventually, and things will normalize, I do believe that, but it seems so hard to understand right now. I was wondering what your personal perspective, what your experience is, when you... when you speak with your colleagues that are on the other side of the aisle, and they've got some, everybody's got very strong ideologies that they just can't let go of. Just wonder if you could comment on that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the question. It is a daily reality that we all face in Washington. And I suspect it's a daily reality that some of you face at the local coffee shop if you ever try to talk politics, right? And there are a lot of people who feel very comfortable just in their partisan corners, whether it's at the local coffee shop or in Washington. You know, there are a lot of people who stand very proud on demonizing the other side of the aisle, demonizing different groups that don't represent them. But that doesn't get anything done for America. That's not the American spirit. You know, when I served in Iraq, I had a platoon of people from all over this country. Different races, different backgrounds, different states, different religious beliefs, different political beliefs. But at the end of the day, we were able to set aside those differences to do what's best for America. And just like we expected that in the Marines, I think you should expect that from Congress. You know, there are 435 of us in the House, 535 of us overall in Congress. We represent different states, different districts, different interests and different priorities, but we ought to be able to find enough common ground to just get things done. So how do you get there? Well, what I've found is really important is you've just got to get to know some of the folks on the other side of the aisle. But one of the first things I did when I came to Washington is I reached out to some Republicans, especially some fellow veterans, because we shared that experience in common. And I said, "Let's just get to know each other." I invited a very conservative Republican from Oklahoma out to dinner. We just went to dinner at a Capitol Hill restaurant. And we sat down, and you know, there are a lot of people in and out of there, a lot of press and all that. And he kind of looked nervous. He's looking around, you know, who might be seeing me having dinner with this Massachusetts Democrat? And I said, "Look, man, it's okay, we're not on a date, I just want to get to know you." This is before I was married. But we did get to know each other. And we worked on a lot of bipartisan legislation together. And that Republican, from a very conservative district in Oklahoma, was the only Republican to stand on the floor of the House of Representatives and defend Syrian refugees, because he understood the national security reasons for continuing to allow refugees into our country. That was a very politically courageous position for him to take. But I'd like to think he did it in part, not just because he's a veteran who'd been to the Middle East and gets this issue, but also because he knew he had some real strong allies across the aisle. And when we went back to the Armed Services together, we worked on legislation to help with that. So that's what I think we need to do. And I'll wrap up with a quick story from just down the road from here. How many of you have been to the Agawam Diner? This is a good diner crowd. You know, I had to go all over this district in my first campaign. And to say that I was an underdog was a little bit of an understatement, because we did our first poll after I'd already been campaigning for seven months, and I was only 54 points down. My pollster told me, "Seth, it's statistically impossible to win this race, you should quit." I had to have a lot of conversation with voters. And I've had a lot since. But still, one of the most memorable was with a United States Navy veteran from World War II, who fought in the Pacific at the counter at the Agawam Diner. And I was told by the owner, "This is a vet, you should get to know him." And so I walked up to him, expecting him to be pretty excited to have a vet running for Congress. He didn't, he wasn't all excited. He was more interested in his coffee than he was interested in me. He didn't have much to say. But he did say this. He said, "Seth, if you win this race and you go to Washington, go as an American. Not as a Democrat or as a Republican, but as an American." And that is exactly the kind of congressman that I've tried to be every single day. And if I get a new job next year, that's exactly what I'll do and who I'll be, and that job as well. It's an honor to represent you. Thank you so much for coming out this afternoon.